And we just want to welcome you this evening to our public hearing for our 2025 budget. We have some board members who are remote and we have two who are here with us today, our chairman and our director Rosa Ortiz. We also have with us this evening-
The interpreters cannot hear you.
President Carter and our general counsel Kent Ray. We have an interpreter. If you are in need of a English as a second language interpreter, please call us up and he will assist, or Spanish. And we also have interpreters for those who are hearing impaired, who you will be able to see on the screens. This forum this evening is for you to speak up and to speak out. We will have a presentation by our chief financial officer, Tom Mccone, who will present the budget. And then following him, in order, we will have our speakers. We do have one speaker who is remote and we will take our remote speaker first. I'm going to turn the platform over to the chairman of the board, Mr. Lester Barclay.
Good evening. I'm Lester Barclay, chairman of the Chicago Transit Board. Welcome and thank you for participating in our annual public hearing on the CTA's proposed budget. I would like to introduce those in attendance today, both in person and remotely. Seated with me is board director Rosa Ortiz, President Dorval Carter, and general counsel Kent Ray. Online, we have vice chair Bernard Jakes, Director Michelle Lee, and Director Nima Ja. We will now begin the public hearing. Before we open the hearing up to the public, we will first have a brief presentation on the 2025 proposed budget by our chief financial officer, Tom Mccone. Tom?
Can you hear me? It's on? Oh, it's on. Okay. Thank you. Thank you Chairman Barclay, President Carter, Director Ortiz, and members online. My name is Tom Mccone, Chief Financial Officer. I'm going to provide an overview of the operating budget and our five-year capital improvement program. What you see on the screen is the cover of the budget book, which was released on October 11th, both online and at various public libraries. Contained within that budget are the themes for 2025, which are enhancing service and reliability. This budget includes funding to increase service hours above the levels of this current year and also above 2019 levels as well. This also includes funding to maintain cleaning of our buses, trains, and facilities. Also included is budgeted security levels that match the expenditures that we've been experiencing this year, and then additional investments in employees on both the operating and the capital side. Additional overview of the budget. The operating budget totals 2.16 billion. This is an 8% increase over the fiscal year 2024 budget. That's primarily due to the wage increase this year of 4%, and then the addition of that 4% of service that I mentioned the page ago. The capital improvement program totals 6.95 billion. We are anticipating ridership growth rate of 25% over the 2024 budgeted levels. This incorporates some of the ridership growth that we've already seen this year and anticipated growth next year as well, bringing us to a ridership retention rate of 80% of 2019 levels. In addition, we are going to require federal relief funding anticipated at $578.7 million to fill the gap between revenues and expenses in 2025. That will leave some funds remaining for 2026, but a large gap remaining to be filled in 2026. Some of the highlights. Not only do we have increased service levels, we are not anticipating any fare changes. We have increased ridership, bringing up our overall retention rate. Improvements in investments in our workforce. Security expense flat to our forecast for this year. We have an increase in the price of electricity, which is incorporated in here as well. And then we're maintaining our investments in our social service outreach programs and our partnership with the Department of Family and Support Services. So more details on the operating budget. What you see here is the revenue side. So on the revenue side here, we have public funding anticipated at 1.1 billion from our traditional sales tax, real estate transfer tax, RTA allocation coming in at 369 million. This is a 5% increase over the forecast for this year. Reduced fare reimbursement coming in basically flat to what we've experienced in previous years at 17 million, far short of the amount of actual free and reduced rides that we provide. And then advertising, other system-generated revenue at $33 million. Further details on the ridership forecast, what you can see here, we're forecasted to finish 13.6% higher than we did in 2023. This is actually the second highest growth rate in the country amongst our peer agencies. So we've seen robust ridership growth this year. We anticipate that growth continuing next year before it starts to flatten out in 2026 and 2027. Ridership retention is expected to remain higher on bus than it is on rail. Those are patterns that we have seen throughout the recovery. So we're anticipating a retention rate of 90% for bus and just shy of 70% for rail. On the expense side of things, what you can see here is that labor represents roughly 2/3 of our budget. So that labor expense comes in a little more than 1.4 billion. This incorporates the wage increase that was provided this year, along with an increase in service hours. As I mentioned, 4% over 2024 budgeted levels and actually almost 6% higher than they were in 2019. On the material slide, there's a slight increase there due to the fact that the fleet continues to age. We are providing additional service and then the ongoing effects of inflation. On the fuel and power side, this encompasses basically flat price of diesel fuel, but a significant increase in the price of electricity, primarily due to supply and delivery charge increases there. The purchase of security services at 88.5 million, that represents roughly 4% of our total budget. This is basically flat to the expenditures that we expect this year. This is the allocation for the purchase of security services from our private security forces, along with the agreements we have with our public police departments, both in the city of Chicago and in the suburban departments. This does not include what is included in the Chicago Police Budget for the Mass Transit Unit, which is primarily responsible for security on our system. In addition, and then finally, we have the other expenses, which include our contractual services, things like the Ventra system, other technology expenses. We also have our debt service there, notably close to $100 million for our pension obligation bonds. So when you take them together, you have revenues and expenses. As I mentioned before, this leaves a gap of about 579 million, which is filled by our federal COVID relief funding for this year. That's the number in pink. There is about 66 million that we're expecting will remain in 2026, leaving a gap of 539 million. The gap climbs to 642 million in 2027. This is the fiscal cliff, as it's been described here, and this is the amount that it looks like for the 2026 and 2027 years for CTA. Notably, the public funding side of it, we see the sales tax and associated revenues increasing by 3.6% in 2026 and then 3.1% in 2027. An additional note about sort of the gap that we're experiencing and some of what we're noting and advocating for in terms of additional public funding to help fill that gap is that CTA actually has the lowest amount of subsidy per passenger trip of any of the comparable agencies across the country, and then notably less than some of our local agencies, both PACE and METRA here. So one of the things that we note as we look to fill that gap is some of the inequities that have been built into the system and the public funding that's provided to CTA, and this is just an example of that. While we have the lowest operating expense per trip, the lowest operating loss per passenger trip, we have the lowest amount of subsidy per rider on the system. On the capital side, so not only are we proposing an operating budget, but we also have our five-year capital program. So the size of the program is 6.95 billion. That is higher than it has been in previous years, and that's primarily due to the inclusion of funds for the red line extension. So as you look down this funding source list here, you will see the transit TIF at $950 million. You will see the capital investment grant at a little more than $1 billion. That's $1 billion of the close to $2 billion that we're anticipating from the federal government to support the RLE program. You see some of that additional local funding in terms of the CTA bonds allocated to the RLE program as well. So that creates a slightly larger capital improvement program that we've had in prior years. But notably, there's a number of other projects that are funded in this program as well, including the all-stations accessibility program, the bus electrification program, and notably, a number of facility upgrades as well. So going into details on each of these, here's the red line extension program. So again, total cost, 5.75 billion. Some of that includes the contingency that was required to be added as we went through the final phases of getting that full funding grant agreement for that $2 billion in federal funding that's coming into the program. Here's a further description of that, and we're looking forward to that project really taking off next year. In addition, on the all-stations accessibility side, you can see the funding here to complete phase one of the program and the stations that are included in phase one of the program. Notably, Lawrence, Argyle, Berwind, Bryn Mawr, those are all associated with RPM Phase One, which we are expecting to see come online here at the end of next year, which will be a great milestone to achieve. Again, adding some of those now accessible stations into the program. In addition, we have the Austin Green Line Station and the Racine Blue Line Station coming online from an accessibility standpoint as well, along with funding to complete phase one and then funding into phase two of the ASAP program. Again, already 70% of our stations are accessible. On the bus side of the house, we have our electrification program. So the bus electrification program is including funding to not only purchase electric buses, but also to upgrade facilities so that they can support those buses. And so I'm actually just going to read down to the bottom of here, noting that there is funding in place for the electrification of the 103rd Street Garage on the far south side, and then for the Chicago Garage on the west side, which will allow for electrification of those two garages as we put in place funding to also purchase vehicles to go into those garages. Beyond the bus electrification program, we do have the ongoing upgrade of the bus rolling stock, so completing the purchase of those 600 new standard buses, which we do expect to conclude next year. In addition, as I mentioned, the electric buses replacing the older 4000 series buses, along with overhauls of our existing fleet. On the rail side, we continue the purchase of those 400 in the base order of the 7000 series rail cars and overhauls of our existing fleet, and then additional investments in our maintenance and fleet equipment. Notably, on the bottom here, facilities upgrades, including upgrades that are back of the house but important to our employees, such as bus turnarounds that will include restroom facilities as well for our employees. That concludes my overview of the budget. Just a reminder, in terms of where we are on the calendar, today is the public hearing. Again, as I noted, we released this budget on October 11th. We are putting the budget in front of the board for their consideration at next week's meeting on November 13th. Then it will be submitted to the RTA. We'll present to the RTA on the 22nd of November, and they're expected to hold their vote on December 19th. That concludes my presentation, Mr. Chairman.
And with that, we are going to move into our public comments. We asked that you keep your remarks to three minutes, and we did have a process whereby we solicited public comments online, and we had a number of individuals who signed up online beginning at the beginning of October, and then we have a few who came in this evening and who also requested to speak. Our first public commentator is going to be Nick Hunter. Welcome, Mr. Hunter.
I wanted to center my comments around rider trust, and that's both in long-term projects, short-term fixes that don't require too much money, but would improve rider trust. So I think the first thing I'd like to start with is a good example of putting a good foot forward and then kind of just walking it back and not seeing much of it again. So back in, I believe it was April, we put out the chatbot and stuff, and it worked great and stuff. The first two times I used it, I was able to report smoking and stuff, and like within a stop, the operator was off, took care of it. It was great. And then probably since May, it just stopped working. Like, nobody responds anymore. I've reported at least three smokers on one train ride. I've made it all the way from the Harlem Yard to Clinton, and nobody has done anything about it. So this, again, one example of not following it through, like making a good public image and stuff. But yeah, so I know we've been talking about smoking for a while. Still don't see a resolution to that. Tie that back to the chat box. I know we tried to fix that there. The QR code that you just put on there, so it was really interesting. So I saw the presentation that your interns gave from that and stuff, and it's really interesting to see how much it was stripped back from its original idea. And also, your interns told me that you did not pay them for this idea, even though they were awarded $250 in prize money and stuff. Other non-expensive fixes that are just on the management side, bus bunching, I think I can pretty confidently say that it's almost more common to see buses bunched together than not and stuff. So we're ending up with three buses within five minutes, and then you'll see a 20-minute gap and stuff. Moving on to larger things, immediate denial of any sort of benefits of trying to merge together. I'm not fully on board with the MMA, but it seems like this approach to this is just, we're going to keep asking for money. And I think that's a real theme in this budget, which is, there's no problem statements. We're just going to keep going as it is. So it's really disappointing to see that we're not really going to move on or solve any of our current problems and that and stuff. And I think that really just ties to like bristling at the idea of any help and stuff. So people in the general public do want to help you. Director Recreio pointed this out at the last board meeting and stuff, how we're not doing this and stuff. But since then, I just, I think you've seen a pretty vocal public across the past year, and just nobody's ever reaching out to us and stuff. The government affairs team seems to just randomly text me like every six months to kind of check in and stuff. It's really sort of back channel and stuff. It's definitely not through any sort of official channels. So to see that it's coming in mostly indirectly and through back channels rather than any formal channels is again furthering any sort of distrust there. Let's talk about the updated schedule. So we just said that we're upgrading, we're making, I believe it's 1,200 more runs a week and stuff. And the press release said, yes, we have the absolute staff to do this. And even today, you're delivering 82% of that service. So it's really disappointing to see that as well. So just continue all these issues in the bubble.
That's three minutes.
It's three minutes. Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Hunter. Our next public commentator is Bruce Mainzer.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. I am the co-chair of the Chicago Metro Chapter of the Climate Reality Project. I have a degree in transportation planning from Northwestern, and I was one of the first employees of the RTA. I'm not going to tell you the year I joined RTA. I addressed the CTA and RTA boards last year regarding the slow pace that CTA is taking with respect to electrifying its bus fleet. Our concern at that time was not that CTA wouldn't make the deadline of 2040 to electrify its bus fleet, but it was to encourage CTA to push harder, to have a greater proportion of CTA's bus fleet to be electric rather than diesel in the years up to 2040. We are in the midst of a climate emergency, and everyone has a responsibility to end their reliance on fossil fuels. CTA's bus fleet is a significant emitter of greenhouse gases, approximately 3% of all greenhouse gas emissions from on-road vehicles within the city of Chicago. Bus electrification is also essential for reducing CTA's operating costs. Conservatively, we estimate that a CTA fully electric bus fleet will save CTA over $45 million annually in fuel and operating costs. We disagreed with CTA's decision to go forward with 600 new diesel buses, which will now continue to admit dangerous greenhouse gas emissions throughout the decade of 2030s. While other major transit systems like LA, Seattle, and Boston will be aggressively transitioning their fleet to battery electric buses, the CTA's 2022 charging forward plan will not have CTA achieving more than half of its buses being electric until 2036. Because of this slow transition, our Chicago chapter of the Climate Reality Project proposed legislation, which was passed by the Illinois State Legislature to implement a 2026 ban on the purchase of fossil fuel buses by PACE and CTA. With this new capital plan, we continue to be extremely concerned with CTA's lack of progress in creating the infrastructure necessary for electric buses and keeping up with their own charging forward plan, a plan that was already much slower than PACE's and every other major transit system in the country. Construction on CTA's 103rd Street Garage was supposed to start in 2023, and that garage was also supposed to start accepting electric buses this year. This 2025 capital program does not even have the 133 million capital costs programmed in this year. Instead, now pushes that request for funding to next year. The 77th Street Garage construction was supposed to start in 2024 and start accepting e-buses in 2027. There's no mention of that in this plan. The 74th Garage is supposed to start in 2028 and accept e-buses in 2029. Again, no capital project is programmed. Finally, the charging forward plan identified a need to find a site to build a brand-new garage on the west or south side, and construction was supposed to start on this garage in 2027. Again, no mention of this project. CTA's lack of progress in this area is shocking and causing concern that there will not be enough facilities to order a significant number of electric buses. Our concerns about CTA's commitment to electric buses is further supported by CTA being evasive about how many of its 600 new buses it intends to order over the five-year capital plan will indeed be electric. We are in a climate emergency, and the CTA does not seem to be operating in a way that recognizes this. The planet will suffer as CTA takes its time to electrify its fleet, while other transit agencies are progressing to more electrified buses and major reductions in greenhouse gases in the next few years. We have serious doubts that CTA will make the necessary progress to at least order enough electric buses to make a meaningful reduction in its carbon footprint and are sure that Chicago will get a fully electrified fleet by 2040.
Thank you. Our next public comment is from Garland Armstrong, who is joining us by phone. Garland Armstrong, can you hear us? I think his phone is on mute. Or we have him on mute. Okay, while we work through our technical difficulties with Zoom, we will hear from our next in-person public commentator, Keanu Gottlieb. Good evening, Mr. Gottlieb. You have three minutes.
Ladies and gentlemen of the board, President Carter, my name is Fabio Gettlieher, and I'm organizer of Commuters Take Action, a group of Chicagoans who really just want better transit. And once again, I come to talk to you about service levels, but hopefully I'll keep it short today. In the 2025 budget document, it is claimed that service levels will be returned to pre-pandemic levels by early November of this year, and indeed, this was reflected in the new L schedules that took effect on November 3rd. In this iteration of the schedules, the amount of runs is indeed nearly the same as in 2019. We've actually some welcome changes to service distribution throughout the day to account for new travel patterns. But despite it only being four days, it is more than evident that the CTA is not able to reliably deliver on these promised service levels. Since Sunday, only the yellow line has delivered more than 90% of its scheduled service every day. Other lines have big variance, with service delivery percentages falling somewhere into the 80% range. In other words, despite CTA's claims, the CTA is still running service that is reduced about 15% compared to 2019. And even though the number of train runs has definitely increased since the height of the CTA crisis about two years ago, train headways remain vitally inconsistent. It is really no good to have three trains in three minutes followed by a 15-minute gap, and that is a daily occurrence during my rush hour commute. Every single day without fault, it happens. To provide some context, and from the history books, a Sun Times article from 2001 shows that 97% of L trains arrive within 3% of their scheduled time. If you apply the same criteria today, for example, on the blue line, we see this number to be only about 70%. It's so sad how the CTA's operational excellence has fallen. So I beg you, before committing to actually increasing more service, let's focus on improving the operation so we have consistent headways and train drivers running on time. If a schedule says it's going to run over the time, let's make it so. And while there has been progress in hiring, it is no secret to everyone, except for the CTA press release column, that the agency simply does not have enough manpower to run these full schedules. I think everyone in this room who's been following the numbers knows it, that the numbers just don't add up. The people aren't there to run the trains. And yeah, the public has been asking for higher service levels, but I think it's more important that we can have an honest discussion and communication with the agency. Instead of living in this chemican village when we claim that we're running full schedules, let's have a more candid conversation where, you know, the CTA can say, hey, we haven't made the mark, we are still only running 85% of pre-pandemic schedule, but we're working to make it better. Let's just be honest. I think that's the number one thing that everyone's been asking for, and the mark has been missed. We are now about, I think, fifth iteration of these so-called dynamic schedules, and none of them have actually delivered 100% service on any day. So that's where we stand. You know, maybe Dorval Carter is taking inspiration from the empty politicians of the day, where if a lie is repeated after enough, it just becomes reality. But waiting for a train-
Best time, Mr. Gottlieb.
-we see something else. Thank you.
Thank you. Have we cleared up the issues with Zoom? And we're ready? Okay, our next public commentator is Garland Armstrong. Mr. Armstrong, can you hear me? Do we need to unmute him? Wait, Mr. Armstrong?
Good evening, everyone. It's Garland Armstrong, formerly of the Springs and Elmwood Park, now living in Des Moines, Iowa. How you doing, everybody?
We're fine. You have three minutes.
Can y'all hear me?
Yes. Can anybody tell Garland he has three minutes? Peter?
We can hear you, Garland.
Yeah, we hear you. Go ahead. All right. Thanks. I just deeply am concerned, especially if there's, like the safety part, I put down, like, I just would like to know the update progress of it, especially like when y'all are having the, if there's a fire, like, you know, I said that in the report a couple of years ago, and I just would like to know the progress of it, especially for those people who are working at CTA, cannot speak clear English, and if the unthinkable does happen on the rail and on the bus, and then how to translate them, because so that their lives is most important, because I don't want to hear about like dead bodies, especially on my iPod, especially what's happening for the CTA. And I just would like to know, how many more people are trained for this if the unthinkable does happen when you're driving or riding the rails? Because I just would like to know up to date on it. How many people are trained for this if the unthinkable does happen, and then how to be extremely well-planned for this, and make sure that all walks of life, including people who are disabled, riding on it, to make sure that their lives is most important involved, and everyone, so that people won't be complaining, why did CTA don't have a backup plan if this is going to be happening down the road? So they would like to know, and I just would like to know the progress update on it so far.
Okay, thank you very much, Garland Armstrong.
All right, and I'll be looking forward to hearing from you, George. And thank you very much. And you have yourself a happy Thanksgiving, Merry Christmas, and Happy New Year. My wife's birthday is coming up on New Year's Day, too.
Whoever is in charge of safety and security reaches out to Mr. Armstrong as it relates to safety measures and fires on trains. Security reaches out to Mr. Armstrong as it relates to safety measures and fires on trains. Our next public speaker is Olivia Gahan.
All right, so have security reach out to me.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Olivia, and I am a part of Commuters Take Action. My comment here tonight focuses on the proposed safety budget. I am disappointed in the agency's proposed 25% increase in the purchase of security services in 2025. This year, the CTA is already 33% over its 65 million budget, bringing the total spend closer to 87 million. In comparison, the proposed budget increase for labor is only 4% year-over-year when the agency continues to have known issues with attrition. This is especially troublesome when the budget report failed to include any success metrics for the various private security contracts the CTA currently has. In contrast, the woefully underfunded outreach budget coming in at $2 million resulted in 7,800 interactions with unhoused writers. Between January 2023 through July 2024, the CTA-funded outreach partnership connected 88 people to housing and facilitated 220 shelter placements for individuals on the red and blue lines. This is what safety looks like, so why not expand this budget item? The CTA doesn't need more money for the private security. The CTA needs to put together a plan for a crisis assistance, response, and engagement pilot. Recently, the CTA president demonstrated that he is willing to engage in pilot programs with his secretive Zero Eyes contract. In his Department of Homeland Security evaluation of this AI gun detection, it found that it was no more helpful than somebody watching the cameras or having to bystander call 911. The CTA does not need an inflated budget for private security. It needs to invest in a pilot plan on how to implement a crisis assistance, response, and engagement plan. The board itself has demonstrated an interest in this plan, asking three years ago for a holistic understanding of how this plan might be put together. So I'm asking today, where is this plan? Luckily, the CTA can look at other transit agencies for guidance. In 2020, the BART piloted only $1 million for a community ambassador program. Within the first year of that pilot program, the unarmed teams de-escalated or otherwise responded to 12,000 interactions. Out of those, a police officer only had to be called 132 times. People want appropriate responses. Workers want to do their job without threat of harm. Outreach workers want to be able to provide their critical services. And writers, we just want an uneventful commute. Those who need help, they should get the help. Don't increase the already inflated security budget for more of the same and instead invest the time and resource into a plan for a non-law enforcement, crisis, assistance, response, and engagement team who are trained in de-escalation and can provide assistance to intervene. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next public commentator is Kyle Lucas.
Greetings, Board. My name is Kyle Lucas. I'm the Executive Director of Better Street Chicago, a grassroots organization that advocates for better street infrastructure and public transit. And today, I'm here to address an issue that we have with this budget. You know, the budget is titled "Innovating Transit for a Vibrant City," but many advocates are left with the question, where is the innovation? In particular, my mind is around private security, the private security contract that CTA currently has. And with this, I also think about the K-9 contract as well. With this, it's really been ineffective and widely unpopular with ridership. Previously, with the K-9 contract, CTA has claimed that its use was justified in order to prevent fare evasion, citing that that was to prevent serious crime. However, CTA has been unable to provide any evidence that fare evasion is linked to serious crime on the system. With the private security contract, I think you could ask just about any rider on the system, and they would tell you that they don't feel like it makes them feel safer. Mostly, people are standing there in their yellow vests staring at their phones. And really, they just, people say that they don't intervene when intervention is needed. I can cite a personal example. One night, I was on the Brown Line platform, and across the platform from me, there were three young boys who were throwing a football back and forth. That football fell down onto the tracks, and they were hanging over the edge of the platform, looking at the football, wanting to grab it. There was a private security officer at that station staring at their phone, doing nothing. I, from across the platform, had intervened to make sure that they didn't try and get on the tracks and instead contact the CSA downstairs to help them instead. This is a distinct systematic failure of what is supposed to be something that makes us safe. If I wasn't on that platform that night, I'd hate to know what would have happened. But that's not a unique situation. People constantly talk about how the private security officers don't intervene when they're smoking or when there are tense situations. This isn't making safety for us. We really want the CTA to instead invest in actual innovative solutions to create safety. As the previous commenter mentioned, holistic solutions such as transit ambassadors, creating a real active presence on CTA, both on trains as well as in stations, would be a huge improvement, ensuring that they have training in de-escalation and intervention and the ability to connect people with services like mental health care and shelter as needed. I would really also love to see an investment in our customer service agents in order to professionalize them, give them more authority in their stations, and ensure that they have full-time jobs. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next public commentator is Mr. Michael Joseph Crowell.
My name is Michael Crowell. I'm an Evanston resident and currently reorganizing the mobility advocacy group Go Evanston. I moved to Evanston just over a year ago, and that short time had noticed a significant drop in the quality of both rail and bus service. Despite marginal improvements in scheduled and provided service, the purple line is still the worst-performing line in terms of amount of scheduled service provided. It is regularly seeing days of providing less than 80% of scheduled service, some days even running fewer trains in the yellow line despite having more runs in the schedule. Additionally, transfers at Howard between the red line and the purple and yellow lines are often missed to the point where it feels like it's being done on purpose. This combined with the overly long headways lead to me spending far too much time waiting at Howard trying to get just the last few miles on my trip. This is in stark contrast how trains are held at Belmont and Fullerton to make sure riders can transfer. Once you get on the purple line, you'll notice it moves at a crawl due to slow zones on the Evanston branch. These slow zones were seemingly caused by deferred maintenance as they were non-existent when I first moved there. This adds at least five minutes to the trip in both directions to lane riders and lengthening headways with longer turnarounds. While there has been overnight work on a reduced amount of slow zones down from 42% to 36%, that hasn't happened in a month now, with most of the slow zones still remaining as work on the track continues to be postponed. The Davis station has been seeing rehabilitation as part of the Refresh and Renew program, but the project was completed, was just completed despite starting in May. The new drop ceiling was left half-finished for months, making the station look like an unfinished basement, which is very unappealing to riders already worried about the CTA's reliability and safety. Additionally, the project was advertised as part of the summer batch of the Refresh and Renew projects, but was pushed into the fall batch along with eight-hour stations and bus stops, yet still advertised as if they were new additions to the program. Davis is also the main bus hub for Evanston, and bus service is just as unreliable as the purple line. 93 regular-use buses stacked, turning already long 20-minute headways into 40 minutes plus. While I have the multiple bus routes I can use to get between West Evanston and Davis, that is not the same case for residents of Rogers and Albany Parks who rely on the route. As despite the unreliability of the route, it currently sees a 93% weekday and 107% Saturday ridership as of August 2024. So the service hasn't seen any expansion since 2018, remaining without a much-needed Sunday service. That 2018 service expansion came at the cost of the 206 service, which has fallen even further since then, now only operating one hour in the morning and one to two hours in the afternoon, depending on the direction you travel in. Service starts far too late and ends far too early even when we use to travel during peak service. It's hard to even call it a circulator anymore. It's more akin to a school bus for ETHS students with those paltry hours. I would honestly prefer Pace take over operation of route. It's clear the CTA doesn't want to anymore. All these issues come at the same, at a time when President Durol Carter has indirectly lambasted about how suburban riders only make up 10% of ridership. That number is only going to continue to drop as the CTA continues to ignore the suburban residents of the near northwest and south suburbs, despite having obligations to provide transit to these areas. The issue should look at getting ridership from all regions of the metro area, but is currently treated like an us-versus-them situation. I know you fear a consolidation to the transit agencies into the Metropolitan Mobility Association, but actions like this only make it more likely to happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Audrey Winnick.
Hi, I'm Audrey Winnick. I'm a senior director at the Metropolitan Planning Council, and I'm also representing Elevated Chicago, a coalition that advocates for equitable transit-oriented development in Chicago, and I serve as co-chair of the Policy Working Group. I'm here to advocate that CTA add a line item in its budget for a pilot program of transit ambassadors. As we all know, real and perceived safety issues have contributed to transit ridership not recovering after COVID. Concerns about safety also extend to CTA employees, as was reflected in a Chicago Tribune article on Monday. We have seen other systems implement various forms of transit ambassador programs, including in San Francisco, Los Angeles, and Boston, which have generated positive results. We believe this could be structured as a pilot program. We'd envision a successful program being one with staff that have social work skills, training on de-escalation, skills supporting riders with disabilities, and that are trained to have a comprehensive understanding of how to help riders use the CTA and make connections with other transit in the region. These positions would be uniformed, unarmed, and equipped with radios to summon backup from law enforcement if needed. They would be encouraged to take a proactive role in outreach to riders and to report problems on the system, such as maintenance issues to CTA. They would create additional uniform presence on the CTA system so riders have a place to ask questions, and there are more eyes that can identify and address problems more quickly. Based on input from riders, we do not believe the security guards and K-9 units that have been operating the past couple of years are effective about, at making riders feel better about riding transit. To our knowledge, CTA has been able to provide no assessment on their effectiveness. MPC and other advocates have reached out directly to CTA staff and have had multiple conversations about our desire for a transit ambassador program over the past three years, but there has been no progress. Given the increased urgency of attracting riders back to transit, we feel that now is the time. In fact, legislation introduced in the state legislature in the spring, the Metropolitan Mobility Authority Act, would mandate a pilot of transit ambassadors, which reflects the level of interest by state legislators in seeing such a program. We hope CTA will modify its budget to include a line item to fund a pilot program. Secondly, we would like to request that CTA add a line item to fund dedicated staff to work on equitable transit-oriented development. We know that CTA has high aspirations for ETOD around future red line extension stations and along the 95th Street corridor to ensure a high level of coordination and sustained activity in advancing the transit-supported land use plan. We request CTA add this line item to fund at least two full-time staff dedicated to equitable transit-oriented development. In the past, CTA did have staff dedicated to such a role, but has not in recent years. Given the intense focus on building transit-oriented development around CTA stations, we request this role, and it seems more important than ever. Thank you for consideration of these requests.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Joseph Miskamara.
Hello. Yes, that is very close to the pronunciation. It's Joseph Miskamara. Good job. My name is Joseph Miskamara. Thank you for all being here. I'm a daily transit rider, and I live in Lakeview. I'll keep it simple. CTA's number-one priority should be making transit more frequent and convenient, and everything in the budget should reflect that priority. And I have a specific recommendation that I'll get to in just a minute. I want to be clear that I cannot provide expert financial evidence, or sorry, financial advice, but I did read the budget PDF, and I can offer my perspective as an extremely frequent transit rider. In October alone, I logged 67 train and bus rides. I challenged the board to beat that. And the reason why I use transit so much, though, is because I'm a very climate-conscious person. I work in energy efficiency. In college, I spent my summers researching climate extremes, and I also encourage my college's university administration to divest from fossil fuels. Last year, I wanted to lower my carbon footprint, so I sold my car, and I'm proud to say that I get to work every weekday on a train powered primarily by clean nuclear energy. I'm able to choose this awesome commute because the system safely takes me where I want to go, and as much as I complain about the long gaps in service, I'll admit that it's slowly getting better. So given my background, you might be surprised to hear that I think that the CTA should approach bus electrification without an aversion to new diesel buses. So Bruce, I don't know how much, you know, we probably agree on more than we disagree, but I gotta say that I think diesel buses are underrated. As you might be aware, the state recently passed a bill that bans transit agencies from ordering non-zero emission buses in 2026, although it provides exceptions if there's no funding, suppliers, or charging facilities. Today, I am recommending that the CTA uses these exceptions to justify diesel bus purchases if appropriate, and here's why. The emissions that we reduce by getting people from diesel buses to electric buses is much less significant than getting people into those diesel buses in the first place. Bruce, you mentioned the 3% of Chicago's emissions that come from, like, the buses, the CTA buses. I personally think it's a bigger priority to worry about the other 97%. And how do we get people to switch from cars to buses? You offer them dependable, frequent, fast service. And so while I appreciate the smooth ride of those blue electric buses on Chicago Avenue, they should absolutely not be a priority if their acquisition comes at the expense of reliable service or threatens cuts to other parts of the capital improvement program. So maybe when the technology or economics of zero emission buses improves in the future, we can resume this conversation. But as long as the 2026 all-electric mandate remains a challenge, I would encourage you to use the state-granted exemptions. Despite the huge benefits of electric buses, the severity of CTA's impending budget gap requires cost-saving measures. I understand that some funding is awarded specifically for zero emission buses, like the $68 million in CMAP's air quality grant. But going forward, please try to explain that in future grant applications. Diesel buses still achieve huge net reductions and might even outperform electric buses per dollar spent. So let's say we do free up more funding for other capital projects. Where should that money be allocated? My suggestion is anything that makes transit more convenient. Maybe it can be used on speeding up their procurement.
Best three minutes.
So it doesn't take two years to put automated traffic cameras on buses for the Smart Streets pilot. But I appreciate you being here, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Olin Wilson Thomas.
Good evening. My name is Olin, and I'm an Evanston resident. While the drastic decrease in ridership that the CTA has seen post-pandemic is not entirely its own fault, there are a number of contributing factors that are well within the CTA's control that can and should be addressed today. The first issue I'd like to talk about is safety. In my experience, this is often the main factor that leads people to avoid the CTA. CTA vehicles, trains especially, have become places free from any accountability whatsoever. People know that they can do whatever they want on them, and no one will stop them. This is a huge problem that has affected every CTA rider at some point or another. Given this problem, I was hopeful when it was announced two years ago that there would be 300 additional security guards at stations. But this has had little impact on safety. Since their deployment, we've seen violent crime go up, not down, and public disturbances continue to be on the rise. Having guards on the platform is great, sure, and I do appreciate the CTA's efforts to improve safety. But we need security guards regularly patrolling between train cars. That's where the panhandling happens, and that's where the blunts get lit. And that's where we need the security guards. The CTA should also move away from private contractors and instead deploy in-house security guards and transit ambassadors. Those private security guards, contracts worth tens of millions, are not a productive use of the CTA's funding. The security companies give little training, inadequate equipment, and poor pay to their security guards, taking the lion's share of money, taxpayer money, for themselves. And if you want some numbers, that $71 million contract that you guys made last year breaks down to nearly $80,000 per guard per year. But the security guards are only seeing around $15 an hour. That's under $30,000 a year. So where is that $50,000 going? Right into the private security company's pockets. I think they're taking you for a ride, no pun intended. But if the CTA insists on sticking with private security providers, the security should at least be put to good use. The second issue I'd like to talk about is unauthorized people going onto the tracks. This poses safety concerns and train delays, yet there is a very simple and relatively inexpensive solution to this problem. I think that the CTA should adopt platform screen doors, which are a feature in almost every other metro system in the world. In terms of customer satisfaction, I believe that installing platform barriers will provide one of the best returns per dollar spent. The platform barriers should be first installed in the underground portions of the red and blue lines where these incidents are most common. Lastly, I'd like to second what Michael has said about the decline in rail service on the purple line. The purple line has become practically unridable during off-peak hours due to infrequent service and inaccurate arrival times. Most of the time, if I'm going south, I will end up walking or biking to Howard instead of dealing with the headache that has unfortunately been Most of the time, if I'm going south, I will end up walking or biking to Howard instead of dealing with the headache that has unfortunately become the purple line. And that's really saying something, given that the Howard stop is always disorganized and chaotic. All of that being said, I do appreciate the CTA's red and purple modernization efforts, and I look forward to those improvements being completed among others. I have deep gratitude and respect for the employees that work hard to keep the system running each day, and I believe that the CTA can and will improve. I just hope that this word makes the public's feelings.
In a big draw for people coming to the city. I am a, sorry. I do ride the bus and train every day to go from Berwyn into the city where I'm going to SAIC. I have a lot of artist connections. It's very hard for us to get out there and get seen, but I see that there is a lot of time and a lot of area on the platforms, and an art printing machine would work really, really well. It could outreach to local areas, like working with schools and getting local children's art in it as well as stuff like my my, well, my art and my friends' art. It's a way of giving back to the community. It's a way of outreach. It's a way of showing people things they wouldn't normally see while they're kind of stuck there and waiting. There are currently printing machines on some platforms, but they're mostly just for drinks, and a lot of them do not work. They are in very poor shape. As far as not only art, it could have practical stuff as well. Just common things, toiletries, plugins. I would be interested in getting our can to a few of these to try to help with some of the drug-related problems that have happened. We're still in the early stage of planning, but we're very excited about the potential of this program, and we think has a can make a real difference in the lives of local artists and art lovers alike. I have a temporary proposal, but I do have more in-depth stuff. I'd just like it to be considered as a public outreach and as a nice unique thing. I've seen these in other places, especially Vegas, and it's a very big hit. It's a very big draw. I'd like to talk further about that at some other time, but thank you for considering it.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Alexander Gillen.
Hey, everybody. I'm Alex Gillen. I'm a regular transit writer, and I think there's a few points I'd like to address about CTA's budget. So our CFO just, or your CFO just told us that we basically have a big black hole in terms of the operating budget from twenty twenty-five onwards. Currently, we've been using federal transit spending to plug this gap, but that's going to run out in twenty twenty-five, and with the recent election results, it seems clear to me that we cannot expect handouts from the federal government to keep our CTA running. I'm wondering if CTA has considered contingency plans and where they're going to find this money? It needs to come from somewhere, and you know, if you can't find somewhere to find it, then it seems like we're either going to deal with fare increases or it cuts the service or both. So I would strongly urge the CTA, you know, I'm sure you're probably doing something in this regard already, but to consider what are we going to do when that money runs out? You know, it sounded like from the presentation earlier, there is not really an answer. The second point I wanted to talk about is Capitol Works projects. I quote from your website, "CTA has drastically reduced the number and coverage of pre-existing slow zones in recent years." And yet, your documents show that in twenty fourteen, we had nine percent slow zones, which has increased to twenty-two percent this year. This is just a blatant lie. Even in recent years, twenty twenty-one, sixteen percent, twenty twenty-four, again, twenty-two percent. These numbers are going up, not down. I'm not sure who's writing these websites. It's not true. Please do something about it. Anyone who's written the Forest Park branch of the Blue Line will know what I mean. The last point I would like to address, which has been mentioned before, is please hire more train drivers. You claim to have restored service to twenty nineteen levels, but as others have said, this is not true. Service is running at maybe eighty percent of what you claim. I hope that you can invest, and I know that the budget claims that there are more drivers being hired. Keep up that work, and I'd love to see more investment in the future. Thank you, Mr. Haim.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Mary Sullivan. You're welcome. Wait one second, Mary, so we can get the mic adjusted. That was Vita.
My main concern is the fiscal cliff, and which I hope it doesn't give us fair increases or service cuts come twenty twenty-six. And I'm thankful for you not cutting all raising fares this year. Thank you very much. And about the bus vision study, I hope there's no cuts as a result. My main concern for that is the sixty-eight North West Highway and the Fifty-four A. Thank you very much.
You are more than welcome, Mary Sullivan. Thank you. Okay. Our next public speaker is Diane Campanin.
Hello. Hi, I'm a regular daily writer of all of the above. I like what everybody said about their various the delays and everything, but I my main concern is the crime, and it has increased. And when you press that red button, you know, when somebody's smoking on the train, the driver does the answer, but you have to make sure you take care of yourself and go in the next car to do it. And then you give the number of the car, you know, but they don't do anything, but they'll just make an announcement. But this is increasing, increasing. The crime, the vandalism and the brazenness. So when everybody's talking about an ambassador type of new thing or whatever, that to me is too gentle. You have to have some kind of enforcement that people that do this, they're very brazen. And now we have a lot of turnstile jumpers. Lady at Belmont's CSA, she said it happens all the time, and these are able-bodied young men and a lot of migrants, and they'll say, they'll just jump, you know, I mean, go through that with a button with a handicap. And that should be stopped also. The CSA should be able to have a way that you cannot just reach over and go through that. They do that all the time. And CTA bus drivers sometime let people on because they say the policy of CTA is not to engage people.
We're tape recording.
Oh, not to engage people. The CTA driver will let people go on, and sometimes they ask, why do you, you know? Well, we're not supposed to argue with people. So I can see if it was a blizzard and if it was some elderly person and you'd be kind and a judgment call, that is okay in my view. I mean, I'm not a driver, but it's pretty frequent. Also, early buses should never be early. I got on the two thirteen bus up by Winnetka, and a person got on in a couple stops forward. He was a streetwise vendor, and he was very, he's going about it. He told the driver, you're, oh, you're early. And we talked, and I said, wow, they're not supposed to be early. He said, well, I don't mind or whatever. He said, good thing I came here early. I mean, in other words, he prepared himself by being early at the bus stop, but the policy is never to be early because you could be stranded at a late hour. And he was, had done a lot of hard work that day selling his streetwise, you know. So, but the crime is the main thing. If you could have, I don't know if it could ever be done that you have a police force, you know, a regular one for, just for the CTA.
Best time.
And it could be showing a little presence, not softness, not social workers, not people non-armed. Put a little fear into some of these people who are very brazen. They need that. I saw a lady casually vandalizing.
That's fine.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Our next public speaker is Latricia Sutton.
Hello, everyone, and good evening. I firstly would like to share a little bit of feedback and appreciation. Thank you to the Transportation Department for your dedication to accessible services and forward-thinking vision. Your work keeps our community connected and moving towards a brighter future. I applaud and recognize your efforts. I have a few questions after reviewing the budget and after being a user of the transportation services here in Chicago. It has been shared that the electric is going to be the next fuel consideration option. In addition to electric and now I've learned today diesel, what alternative resource options or fuel options are up for consideration? I am absolutely thrilled to use the Ventura app. It does provide me information as to when the next bus or train is coming. However, what introduction of accuracy is going to be implemented to ensuring that the information that is shared on that Ventura app is accurate to the bus or the transportation service that's being used at that time? Are there any programs that are aimed at hiring regional, local residents for this new project? For example, the extension of the red line to One Hundred and Thirty Fifth Street. Is there going to be a focus to hiring regional, local residents of that area to help promote stability in addition to the extension of the transportation line? What training services are available for CTA employees to uphold standards of safety as well as to empower the employees of the CTA system? These are some of my few questions that I had after reviewing the budget, hearing some of the speakers of today, and being a user of the transportation services. I once again want to thank you for this opportunity to express these questions towards you, to the people who are truly matters. Thank you very much.
Our next public speaker is Quentin Berkeley.
Hello, CTA Board of Directors. My name is Quentin Berkeley. I've been riding in public transportation all my life. I work at O'Hare Airport for United Grounds Express, UGE. My fellow coworkers and I have been riding transportation for years, and just that we get sick and tired of the homeless people sleeping on O'Hare Airport in the line. And also, I'm all for the red line extension, but I'm a little concerned on how y'all going to build or design in this stuff. Are y'all going to use the bridge like y'all usually do on the brown line, or is the bridge going to be connected towards the Ninety-Fifth Expressway? That's where my biggest concern is. And plus, a lot has changed on the South Side area on Ninety-Fifth. It used to be McDonald's there. I was just wondering, at the end of the line on the Hundred and Third, are y'all going to build a shopping center or restaurants and stuff for the conductors or the bus drivers and stuff so they can eat and stuff? Just like the Green Line on Harlem and Lake, we got shopping centers and stuff too. Are y'all going to do something like that towards the Hundred and Thirty Fifth Street towards the new End of the Line extension of the red line? I'm all for it, but I just want public transportation to be safe, not only for this year, but next year. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, that concludes our public commentators for this evening. I'm going to read the names of a few who registered but who did not, I don't think, checked in. Cooper Henry, Anna Gasanova, Logan Ambrosio, Z E S I R E, Tay Ross, Naquie McMullin. That's it.
Georgette. We have reached the end of our speakers this evening. Since there are no further speakers, the public hearing is now closed. Thank you all for participating. Have a great evening.